I'm going to call this meeting to order.
Yeah.
Let's stand for the pledge.
There is over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Minutes. Do we have an action on the minutes for May 11th of 2021?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Action on the minutes for May 19th, 2021?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous? Okay, and if no one is opposed, we would like to do a friendly amendment to the agenda tonight. We would like to try and move seven points per minute, which is graduation requirements up right now so that we can get Matt to do his presentation quickly. We have to go into non-public directly at 7:00. So we were hoping to try and get that done right away. Is anyone opposed to that?
No.
Okay, great. All right, Matt, you are up. Sorry.
Just for those on the board that will want to see these slides, I'll share them with you so that you can look at them on your computer. Unless you want to turn around and you can see them behind you. It's your choice. I'll share them with the board now. You should have them in your email now.
All right, good evening. Thank you for having me. Oop, the ring. Because I don't have to stand so close.
Okay, it's a little warm, but Dan will adjust.
Okay. All right, Mr. Ambrose, did you share the slides?
I did share the slides with the board, but if the board would like to turn around and look up, is that what everyone wants? I'd prefer to be able to see them.
Convenient for me. Did you email them?
I did email them.
If it's, I did not get them, but. Am I the last one, Jamie?
I think so.
Is it the same slide?
It's like sitting in the.
Very close.
Not exactly.
But a couple of minutes, okay?
Yep.
All right, are we good? Okay. So again, I'm Matt Malila, I'm one of the assistant principals here at Sanborn High School. And here tonight, on behalf of the graduation requirements and schedule committee, it's a committee that I chaired this over the last six months. And we have a couple of recommendations that we'd like the board to consider, but also some of our findings and next steps. We're not done with our work. As I'll say in a bit, the committee is paused, but there's more work to do later in the summer and certainly next fall. But, you know, we'll get right into it. So just for those who don't know, you know, the committee was made up of 16 community members. We had teachers, staff, parents, building and district administrators, school board members. Some folks wore multiple hats. They were, you know, teachers and parents or school members and parents. So that was great. They had multiple perspectives to give. Our goals and objectives were established last December. A proposal was made to ISA and then to you folks. And we really had three objectives. First one you can see was to review and recommend changes to the high school's graduation requirements for 2022-23. Based on that, recommend a daily bell schedule, you know, to meet those requirements with a goal of increasing instructional time in ELA or English Language Arts and mathematics, as well as to reduce teacher preps. And the third goal was to recommend changes to the program of studies and diploma with distinction. We initially scheduled monthly meetings, but we realized in March that we needed more time. We were working between meetings, so we added a couple of meetings, one in April, one in May. And, you know, this turned out to be beneficial. We really felt as though, as of our last meeting on May 20th, it was a good time to pause, get feedback, and then we'll continue the work with the same committee or reconfigured committee, you know, at the end of the summer. But one thing we established early on, based on those three objectives that we were given, we identified three areas we wanted to look at. So we subdivided up into three subcommittees. The first committee focused on career or workforce. So that was, we looked at work-study practices. Are our students who go directly from Sanborn High School into the workforce, are they prepared? What do employers think? Mrs. Alley, who has a phenomenal job, as I always mix up her title, our career pathways coordinator, has hundreds of contacts throughout the area in business and industry. And after we put together the survey, she got that out there. And we got a good response from, you know, local employers. The second subcommittee was the other schools committee, which, as the name implies, looked at other schools, not only in New Hampshire, but in Massachusetts. Collected a massive amount of data. Everything from, you know, socioeconomic status and per pupil cost to, you know, graduation rates and what percentage of students go to four-year colleges, two-year colleges, military workforce, as well as their graduation requirements. What do they require? And also their test data. How are they performing on the SAT and the ACT? So that group had a tremendous amount of data to collect, which they did an excellent job with. And the last group was post-secondary. Again, the names were pretty self-explanatory. They reached out to colleges and universities to see how well our students are prepared for college. You know, what could we offer to make them not only better prepared, but more competitive in the application process? And just so you know, if you haven't seen the presentation that I made to ISA, which was really a conversation, it's on the district website. It's about 90 minutes. It was a great conversation. Wasn't a formal presentation like this. And some of the topics that I'm going to mention tonight were discussed at length. And as I mentioned earlier, again, there's two recommendations coming up that I'd like you to consider, and it's beginning. But, you know, some of the information I'm going to present tonight is really just things the committee recommended going forward, but we still need to work on, and we still need to do additional, you know, work. So let me get right into it. So any questions before I jump into the recommendations? Sorry. So first recommendation, which was approved by ISA back on May 19th, dealt with our graduation requirements. And that recommendation is to reduce the total number of credits for graduation from 28 to 24. You might ask yourself, well, what got eliminated? So everything in black is the same. So these graduation requirements have not changed. It's what our current students have to earn credit in. You know, the changes will be coming in red. There's an asterisk there for a reason, and the next slide will explain that. But in terms of graduation requirements and earning the 24-credit diploma, a minimum of 5.5 credits is elected when needed. There is an opportunity to earn an additional credit or 6.5, which I'll explain in a minute. And we're also recommending, and this came out of the career committee, making advisory a graduation requirement, which there's a slide further down the line that explains why. So you might say to yourself, how come the electives can vary from 5.5 to 6.5? Well, if you add up the left-hand column, that's 24 credits. But if students are taking six credits a year and earning credit, they're going to graduate with 25 credits. So in a sense, you could think of it as maybe a one-credit wiggle room or an additional credit of electives a student can take in their high school career. So I know you're all thinking about the electives up there, so let me go to the next slide. I can come back to this. The second recommendation that we would like the board to consider has to do with program of studies and our electives. And all three subcommittees, when we came back with our individual subcommittee recommendations, all three subcommittees felt strongly that, with some exceptions, of course, like band, which should be full year, chorus, world language should be full year, many of our electives could be half-credit. And there's a lot of reasons for that. You know, not only will that kind of offset the reduction in credits, because now, you know, if you take two half-credits, you know, it amounts to what one credit used to be. But, you know, if I put my teacher hat on, like I was a teacher for 17 years, a lot of students take electives and come October, November, what do they think about the course? I'm kind of done with this class. Not what I expected. Well, guess what? If you're taking it for one credit, you're there for another six months. It can actually be really beneficial to a lot of our kids to have that January reset. You know, come that, you know, there's going to be those kids in November who are like, this isn't what I thought. It's not what I want to study. And, oh, great, the light is close to the end of the tunnel. It's only, you know, holidays and vacations, you know, it's six or seven weeks away until we flip over to a new semester. So there's advantages there. I know from my previous experience in my two previous districts that are nearby, most of our electives are half-year. I think that's fairly common. You know, and we didn't, as a committee, it wasn't our job to decide which classes would be shifting to half-credit. That would be a building-level admin decision and, you know, consulting with the teachers and the team leaders. So I'm going to pause there. I mean, because there's more that I could present that relates to this, but are there any questions? Yes?
So maybe you're going to get to this, but I'm going to guess that I'm thinking the same. I'm going to say what probably most people are thinking out there. We're decreasing our credits. How, I'm guessing the decrease in the credits required have to do with the electives? Are you going to go more into depth, or am I? Have you just not gone to that part yet? Because I don't understand. I understand we're going to make it half a credit.
Yep.
So if a student doesn't like that elective they're doing, what are they doing the other half of the year?
Oh, there'll be another elective. So for instance.
Doesn't that still equal the same amount of elective? Isn't, doesn't that equal one total like we'd had before?
It does, absolutely. So, right, so if you think about like a science elective, maybe they'll take, right now we have forensics. Forensics is all year, September to June. With this shift, forensics would be a natural, you know, shift to a half-credit. Student could take that in the fall, and then the spring, take something else, earth science or, you know.
So it still equals one?
Yes, yep.
So how are we, so I don't understand why we would go from 28 to 24.
Well.
Because, and I'm sorry, I miss, you know, I'll be honest, I watched the last ISA meeting and I was under the wrong, I think I understood incorrectly. I was thinking that it was because the classes were becoming longer or something, and that's why we were doing it. So.
Yes. So there's.
And so I think I misunderstood what all this means. So I'm just thinking. I don't know.
The goal was to, also, a goal we were given was to have math and English daily, not every other day or four out of six days. Because, you know, again, we're trying to increase math and, quite frankly, the LA scores in the district and improve those, because, you know, math has been a focus. So to achieve, to have math and English every day of the week, you really can't have more than a six-period day, because your periods are getting so short.
Yeah.
So if you had, like, my previous district, Monday's a skinny day. They have an eight-period day. Monday, every class meets for 40 minutes. A lot of teachers hate it. A lot of kids don't like it. But the other days are every other, and they're 80 minutes. So, but if you tried to squeeze eight periods into five days a week, you'd probably be talking at best 40-minute classes. And it would just be, I mean, I don't know how.
So the instructional minutes for like a math class is going to be longer?
Yes, so I can, maybe I should bring that up next, yes.
Okay, so, because I think to me that, and that is what I originally took away from that last ISA meeting,
Let me take.
meeting, is that we're lowering our credits, but we're making up for it on the other end, because you're still going to get one credit for math, but you're getting more math instruction.
Yep, so.
That's kind of how we're swapping. Yes, we're decreasing the credits, and I think that's what everybody's going to look at and say, we're decreasing our credits here. Why are we doing that? Low test scores, why are we doing this? But you're just saying, one math credit now is, I don't know how many instructional hours, but it's going to be a lot more with this new thing, but it's only, it's the same amount of credit.
Exactly. So, yeah, so good point. So the way I sequence the slides, I'm glad you brought it up. The daily bell schedule slide is a little bit further down. And pre-COVID, you know, because this year is, you can't base things on this year's schedule. The pre-COVID schedule, classes met for 120 hours a year.
Yeah.
Depending upon if we go with a six-period bell schedule, because we don't have to commit to it tonight. That's a discussion we can finalize in the fall. A six-period bell schedule will make our classes from anywhere from 54 minutes to 60 minutes. Multiply that by 180 days a year, I believe it's 144 to 160-something hours. So you're going, you're increasing by about 24 to 40-something hours a year. You know, 40-hour increase, like a 33% increase in class time.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's a good point. Thank you.
Okay, and I apologize if I jumped ahead. You haven't gotten to that part.
That's fine.
That was how I originally understood it, and, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just add one quick. It would be great if you could do all the slides and then take questions so that we don't.
Okay.
Future things, but the only thing I wanted to add is that when I meet with teachers, which I've been doing a lot the last two weeks, in fact, I've met with all of our teachers. And they have all said that you can't improve student achievement without enough time on task. It's one of the most important problems that we're solving. And it is critical for the community to hear loud and clear that this conversation is about increasing instructional time in math, science, social studies, and language arts.
Yeah.
And still maintaining a critical component that parents asked for, which is that students have opportunities for experiences to try different things. So if you have half-credit electives, you still get to try all kinds of different things, just for shorter periods of time, and it gives more instructional time to those core areas that we're struggling in. So I just, that, when we're done with this presentation, that is the key talking point.
Okay, that's.
All right, and we'll talk about the messaging after.
Okay.
Matt, the same would be, English is also going to be four credits. And the explanation about math would apply to English as well, is that right?
Yeah, correct, exactly, yep.
And science and social studies, honestly.
But there are three credits.
Yeah, yeah, there are three credits each, but the amount of time that you're in there is way more.
Okay.
Yep, great. Thanks for clarifying that.
So, yeah, I mean, so just caution. The recommendations up, the first two were what we want you folks to, you know, vote on tonight ideally. But some are just little. So just so you know, when I'm going through, some of them are just, you know, small, but maybe significant recommendations that different subcommittees had, just so you know. And so we'll go through, as Mr. Ambrose said, and then we can backtrack. So if something's a real burning question, just.
Okay.
Yeah, just make note. We'll come back.
So again, this was kind of just a random list of other things that popped up when we reviewed graduation requirements in the program of studies. We had discussed as a committee, it was also discussed on May 19th, the ISA committee, about, you know, possibly looking at allowing kids to earn credit for physical education, whether it be through athletics or some meaningful extracurricular activity. Again, that's not a decision we could make as a committee, because that's a policy decision. But that was discussed, and that's something that we certainly can look at, you know, in the future. One question that came up routinely, which may come up later, so I'll just bring it up now, is if you look at the slide that I showed of the graduation requirements, there's a very, very small group of kids who we might have to get creative with. If it's a student, if a student takes four years of band or choir and four years of world language, there could be a half-credit, you know, issue there. Because really, with the fine arts credit and 6.5 electives, that's 7.5. That's not the eight credits you would need to achieve those. But that's why I put up the slide, ELOs, internships, you could throw V-Lax in there. We can get creative with getting kids that extra half-credit. They're not going to have to decide as a senior whether I take Spanish IV or a fourth year of, you know, music. So we're not going to do that to kids. And we discussed that at length at ISA. This was brought up by the post-secondary committee. When they interviewed some college admissions counselors, they found out that our kids would benefit from more lab-based science classes, as well as dual enrollment classes. In fact, they said dual enrollment classes are a better indicator of a student's preparation and future success in college than an AP class. These are things we can address in-house, you know, within our departments. Mrs. Levitt, the head of school counseling, she can look into more dual enrollment classes. But I thought that was interesting. This would just make our kids more competitive as they apply to colleges. So again, those were just kind of three random things that I threw in regarding the program of studies. This slide addresses advisory. So this came out of the career subcommittee and us wanting to make advisory a graduation requirement. The survey results were pretty loud and clear. Not just Sanborn kids, but kids in this area in general. We didn't actually just ask employers about Sanborn students and Sanborn graduates. We asked them about, you know, any student who's recently graduated. Have said that they need training. They're great workers once we train them. So, you know, Mrs. Alley has phenomenal ideas, things that we're going to start piloting in the fall with advisory that will address career and college readiness. They're aligned to the Portrait of a Graduate that was put together prior to COVID. And they really address work-study practices. And it's going to be more meaningful. It's going to be quantifiable. Students have to, at this point, we're thinking, complete six different tasks per year. And I'm just going to pull some random things out of my mind in that. It could be as a junior or a senior, you know, writing a resume, preparing a resume. It could be doing a job interview. It could be shadowing someone in industry and learning about that industry. And so there's a lot of, a lot to it. Created a whole draft list of menu choices. But again, local employers say, we need to do a better job teaching our kids how to advocate, communicate, you know, even just, you know, self-regulate, not pick up the phone, can, you know, just focus on the task at hand. So we would like to focus on those, you know, through the advisory. Again, you know, notice the title changed at the top to be addressed in the fall. Daily bell schedule. Again, with that expectation of math and English every day of the week, we recommended shifting to a six-period daily bell schedule. This would allow, again, for those courses to meet five times a week, as I stated earlier. Again, don't, you know, those numbers can change. These are just a couple of draft schedules that we threw together. You know, classes would vary from anywhere from 54 to 60 minutes on those draft schedules. And there's the times I cited before. Pre-COVID, classes met for 120 hours a year. If we switch to those bell schedules, it'll increase somewhere between 144, 162. But again, someone may develop a better schedule next fall. And we're not tied to these schedules. And it should be noted, though, because you may be wondering, that six-period day does include a lunch block, and it includes a time set aside in the day for advisory or FLT, focused learning time. Focused learning time is that time of the day that's, it's critical, it's a time when students can get, be re-taught, competency recovery, they can also enrichment, or in a normal year, they can come, Mrs. Alley will have career speakers and other career opportunities for them. So that advisory FLT time will be the same block. So advisory would meet once or twice a week, and then the other days, FLT would meet. Just so you know, it's not five days a week of advisory or five days a week of FLT. They would meet in the same period of time. And again, I added this bullet. This wasn't part of the ISA presentation, but I've had some conversations. You know, if we decide as a school community that, you know, we would like a bigger block of time in the one day a week, you know, we could go to a modified block. Basically, classes would meet four times a week, you know, three times for 50 or 60 minutes, and then once for 90 or 100. It'd be a little bit less time in the six-period day, but if, again, that can be beneficial to, you know, labs, projects, things like that. But again, not a decision we're making tonight, but probably before we settle on a bell schedule next fall, we should have that conversation, you know. Right, final bell schedule will be developed in the fall. Home with distinction. This is the one area we didn't really get to focus on, but we had some ideas. And at the last ISA meeting, had a really good conversation about it. I know Superintendent Ambrose had some great ideas about it. But one thing, though, that we did feel as a committee is that it needs to be revised. Currently, to earn a diploma with distinction, a student just has to take four additional classes, regardless of how well they do, regardless of their level of mastery, GPA, doesn't matter. And possible revisions. Again, these are just initial brainstorms we came up with. Having a senior capstone project or exhibition, which, again, ties to our Portrait of a Graduate or our graduate success profile, which is part of that document. And one thing that came out in the last ISA meeting, I know Mr. Ambrose mentioned this, is we should have, should play to the strengths of the kids. Not every student is going to be college-bound. So if you have a student who excels in the fine arts, is a musician or artist, they could do a senior capstone on that. You know, if you have a student who's strong in the vocational field, maybe woodworking, maybe they could build a small house, mini-house, and then present that and go through the whole process of what they learned. Because that would be well beyond what they would have been taught in woodshop or in a metal class. So, you know, those were our initial thoughts on that, along with maybe a GPA requirement. But again, I think we were mostly focusing on the capstone project. A lot of schools do them. And, you know, again, they're personalized, student choice. They can demonstrate what they're passionate about, what they excel in. They can apply it to different areas. They can apply it to real-world problems. So I think that has a lot of possibility for us. And is this the last one? Last one. And this, again, as you'll see, the last bullet is going back to ISA. I know Mrs. Levitt's going to present some additional information. The post-secondary committee learned that some of our kids are not getting into college because when they, you know, when a school gets 75,000 applications, which my daughter's a senior this year, she applied to school, 75,000 applications, they have to screen them out. They don't want to read 75,000 applications. And apparently, they look at your class rank. So if it's a highly selective school, and they only, they might make a cut percentage. If you're not in the top 20% of your class, you're out. So if, you know, little Susie's 21st in her class, they throw out the application. Don't even read it. So this college admissions officer told a member of our post-secondary committee, take it off the transcripts. You can, we can still acknowledge our top 10, but you're not doing your kids any favors by including it on the transcript. So, but again, I know members of the ISA committee wanted more details on that. Those are going to ISA on June 16th. And of course, this is something we can focus on in the fall. I think that's the last recommendation. Yes? Questions? I know there are questions, but.
So just for clarifying purposes, could you go to the next slide where you?
Yep.
This is, this is what we're asking the board to approve this evening, so that the committee can then begin the work of developing a master schedule and addressing the other items that were in the list in the fall. So I think it's important to know that we don't have answers to every question tonight. We're creating a framework to move forward to create the answers. And Mr. Malila did a good job of saying, you know, if we want math and reading every day, then we might not have longer blocks for science labs. We need to talk about those things, and those conversations haven't happened yet.
Yeah, we have a lot of work to do. It's exciting, though. I mean, the committee, again, I've worked on a lot of committees, and it was fantastic. I mean, the committee, again, I've worked on a lot of committees and it was fantastic. People questioned each other, they challenged each other appropriately. And I feel like we made a lot of progress in a short period of time because January to May is not a long period of time for a committee to work. And, you know, we have a lot, lot to do, you know, at the end of the summer and into the fall, but we'll get there. I think we've had the hard conversations, we've done the hard work and.
Mr. Malila, I assume that the graduation requirements would change for the students in the, starting in the fall of 2022. The current students would, would continue, we'd have to have a plan for the rollout for the students that would fall under. Granted, it's decreasing, but we don't want seniors that are graduating as juniors either. So we need to have a plan of implementation.
It'd be phased in, absolutely.
Phased in, thank you. Looking for the word.
I mean, I would like to, like advisory, for instance, I would like to see a sophomore after earn three quarters of a credit and a junior that year half a credit. Because there's some really good stuff that Mrs. Alley has, and the committee, there's members of that subcommittee that they put together that are fantastic, that are going to benefit our kids when they go out in the workforce.
Hi, I want to ensure that you're not going to cut the classes or the electives offered. Like if there's a calculus, but there's only six kids enrolled, are you still going to hold that class? You're still going to hold chemistry or, you know, forensic psychology? Are you still going to offer the same courses? Or are you going to?
I don't, I can't imagine we would cut any classes. I know, I don't get, currently, and I'm not trying to like make excuses, I don't get involved in what classes run and what don't now. And if we get to a point where, you know, we have a single-digit number of kids in a class, I, again, that's not something I've been involved with yet in my short time here. I don't, I don't see that happening. I don't, we're not going to cut classes from the program of studies. Kids will still get the full offering, that's not part of what we were recommending. But again, I would have to ask, defer to Mrs. Levitt or maybe Mr. Stack on when we run classes, when we don't.
If you're going down from 28 to 24, there is a potential to cut classes and offerings to the students.
Students are going to have to make some choices. And that's just part of high school. You can't do everything that you want to do. But I think to answer your question, it might be that they're not offered as frequently. So if you have, I'm using forensic science because it just has come up a few times. I've done high school master scheduling and I was a high school guidance counselor. So I understand the complexities of the issues that Mr. Malila's grappling with to answer your question. But the, it depends on the course. To be, to be fair, it's one thing to talk about running AP Bio with seven kids. It's another thing to talk about running the history of rock and roll with seven kids. If the history of rock and roll one year has seven kids, the guidance department may say, we'll run it on a biannual cycle. And then it has to fit in your schedule to take it. And so there's, there's no way to increase the amount of time that we spend on math, ELA, science, and social studies without sacrificing something else. It's impossible. And we're only having math and ELA right now, four out of six days, which is completely inadequate. So in order to fix that, something has to give. And we can't answer every single possible aberration of what we'll give. So in full transparency for the community, some things may not run. It doesn't mean they won't be offered. And some things may not fit into kids' schedules, doesn't mean that they're not offered. People will have to make choices and we all have to make choices and that's part of being a high school student. But I just, I just want to be clear that the, again, the intention here is to increase the time that needs to be spent to achieve our academic goals, not budgeting or cutting programs or cutting things. The physical education teachers are already coming to me and talking to me openly about their concerns about any proposal that would allow you to count a sport for physical educations. They know that's on the slide, they were part of the committee. They're super worried about that. I understand that. I don't know the answer to it yet, it's a to-be-determined item. But that is something that we're going to have to discuss. So this is, again, this is, if you think of building a house, we're pouring the foundation and we chose the lot that we want to build on. All the details have to be, which is why we need another year, we need more time.
And I think just, you know, from being part of the committee, and Jamie can speak to this as well. I mean, the goal was not to really pull things away from the kids. That's the whole reason, if there's something that maybe doesn't fit into their schedule, that's a scheduled class, they could do an ELO to take, you know, make their own class that fits that desire, you know, area that they want to go deeper dive into. You know, also, you know, I know you're talking about the athletics, but the other thing we were talking about with that was that would be on a case-by-case basis, not a flat, you can just do this as an option instead. It's if you're taking, you know, maybe you want to take four years of music and you want to take four years of a foreign language and you really don't have the time to get that PE in there because there's something else you want to do, but you also participate in athletics. It would be a case-by-case basis and it would have to, it would require approval to make it happen. So, you know, to kind of hopefully ease the gym teacher.
Thanks, yes, yes.
Yeah, that's not like a flat, anybody can do that instead of taking gym class. You know, but we're also looking at these electives. Instead of having, say, say they can take one elective over the course of the year, well, now they'll be able to take two. They'll be half-year, so they'll still get to dip their toe into everything.
I guess I'm less worried about the electors, I'm more worried about like core classes.
Right.
Calculus, chemistry, you know, the higher-level classes where if they only, because there are some schools, if there's only four kids, they don't run it. And we want our kids to be able to have those opportunities to take those higher-level science and math classes.
And we also will have, I think Heidi, I don't know if she's here or not, she is working on building relationships. She already has relationships with a couple of colleges, local colleges. There's another college that she's working on, building relationships with that one as well. So we have more ability to get the kids that really want to get those higher-level classes and put more into those dual enrollment, because those classes are really more important college transcript-wise.
Well, that's, and that's my concern.
Than the AP classes, you know, so they're really working hard and she's already been working on it before we even got into this. Like she's really already got going, rolling on a lot of this stuff. So it's definitely being, it's all being thought of and there's a lot of, you know, work being put in. Jamie, do you want to add?
Yeah, so I was also on the committee and I'll echo Mr. Malila's comments about the good interaction from the get-go. People had their positions, they made them known, people broke out, self-selecting into the different groups and it just happened to self-select into about a thirds. It just real good interaction all along. Just for some clarification, from an ISA perspective, the motion that passed the board as a recommend, of the committee as a recommendation to the board was to adopt the framework that is presented with the immediate focus on the two things on the board, but also in support of the overall framework of the other things that Mr. Malila was reviewing. I want to point out, in my opinion, this is, this is all part of a continuum. All right, so we went down a continuum, we reorganized the district. We were able to get funds out of reorganizing the district to put towards intervention. Now, COVID came and blew up the plans, like it did all kinds of plans over the past year. But the intention was, and still is, that we have the intervention to help our students achieve better. After the intervention, the next move was we're replacing everyday math, which when we looked at the criteria that we were using for selecting a program, the program that we had failed both gates. And that's what we've been using. So again, focus on improving student achievements, need to replace the math program where we perform abysmally. Currently looking at seventh through 12th, to say, what do we need to do to beef those up and to have the continuum from, from K through six all the way to 12? So this, if there's any message here in my perspective, the focus of this is time on task. We are not performing well in English, we are not performing well in math and putting more time into those subjects and more time for kids to drill and to understand and to dig into those subjects will help them to perform better. To Moore's point as to, well, where'd the time go? You know, there's, there's so many credits, if you cut it in half and you take the same number of credits, where'd the time go? The time is being invested into, a single credit of math is worth more in time. That's where the time is going to. The time is going to the core areas. And the other aspect of this was, okay, what's core to everybody isn't necessarily what everybody wants to experience in some things. We have to preserve the choices because part of high school is learning who you are, what you are, what you're about, what you're interested in. So in going to the half-credits, which was brought forward by every single subgroup independently as something that we want to get done, which was very interesting to see in the dynamics, was we need to preserve their ability to select and choose different things to their liking. And I think it was Mr. Malila or one of the other members that pointed out, the point that he made today. And there's some people that try something out and determine very quickly in a couple of months that they hate it and they're locked in for a year. This gives some ability. So to me, this is all in a continuum. One thing that wasn't mentioned here, and I'll mention it from the data sets, when we looked at the comparative data, we were the second worst-performing school. There was one other school worse than us. We need to do something about that. We owe that to this community to improve those results. The two worst-performing communities in the testing were the two that went full-on into competency-based grading and reporting out of grading. So proficient, more proficient, less proficient, competent, less competent, et cetera. One that was kind of in the middle, epping, is actually making changes to theirs as we speak, they've already noted it. They used to have competency, that was 3.0. Now they're saying, well, we're going to have basic competency. And basic competency is now going to be 2.5 and competency is 3.0. And then next year, you're going to have basic competency plus. So basic competency is going to be 2.0, basic competency plus is going to be 2.5 and competency is going to be 3. Nobody understands what any of that means. Kids don't understand it, parents don't understand it. So that's one thing, and my idea of a continuum, that's going to be one of the things I want to talk about when we talk about goals and objectives is those that are the best performing aren't doing that. They're using numerics transferred into letter grades where parents understand them, kids understand them. We say often that if we could only get parents more engaged, we have, we have teachers being mother, father, sister, brother, father, confessor, a doctor, psychologist, best friend, and parents just aren't involved as they used to be. One of the reasons is they don't understand where they're at. They're not getting information that helps them to intercede with their own kids and understanding where they are. And I think it's one of the reasons that we aren't communicating that to them well in the system that we have. So I'll get back to that when we get to goals and objectives. But in my mind, this is all a continuum with one goal. We must improve performance. Time on task is key and choices for the kids need to be maintained. And that's what we think that we've come up with with this and I fully support it.
Tom, you talked about the transition between the incoming seniors in that year.
Or the freshmen.
Or the freshmen.
The freshmen.
It seems that there'd be a lot of advantages to each grade. So could you clarify that a little bit?
Yeah, the, when a freshman class starts on a trajectory of learning and credit gathering, right? Getting their credits for graduation, usually when you, when you transition, you phase in. There's, there's a class that is, the freshman class that starts in the new system and the sophomore class finishes in the old system and you transition in. And I'm not sure, that's something that we need to look at is how that, because it's one thing to change the graduation requirements, it's another thing to change the master schedule simultaneously, because that affects the other classes. So we're going to have to, the phase in is going to be interesting with this, it's going to be complicated and it may not be as smooth as a typical phase in, right? And so I don't have definitive number of answers to these questions. I just wanted to pose that there has to be a starting point and an ending, a starting point for the quote "new way" and an ending point for the old way, and I'm not quite sure how that's going to look. We'll have to work on it.
If I can ask a question of, are, are we addressing, I think this is great, I understand what you're saying, more time on task and they can get more into, but what about for the students who, and I see a shift of workforce that college is not appropriate for everyone?
That's right.
So I think that, you know, and I don't know, I won't claim to know all about what goes on at the high school, but what if somebody wants to be mechanic or they're going into some type of trade? Are we taking away from their ability to work in the mechanic shop? Because now they have to take that fourth year of math and they have to take calculus? Are we taking away from, from that? Is that, are we just making them take math that maybe they would have been better off for something else or how?
I think we're still going to maintain the math experience as a fourth year. So I know like, and again, don't quote me because I keep saying the new guy, but I know a number of our electives, Mr. Stack's here too, some of the automotive count as a math experience. So that could count, if you have a kiddo who's into auto or woodshop, that fourth year math could be, you know, one of those vocational classes. So, you know, we looked at that very carefully. I know there was a number of people in our committee were very passionate about our vocational students and they, they were comfortable with this.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's something, I mean, like I said, this all sounds good, I just want to make sure, because I, I do think that there's going to be a shift in the workforce that going to a four-year college is not, it's great for some, but not for all. So I just want to make sure that those students are going to continue to be open, to get them. I'd love to see us broaden and enrich those programs.
Thank you. Can I, I just couldn't agree with you more, that's why I got excited. Because I really think it's so important to, I grew up in the generation of, they were pushing college so hard.
Yeah.
And it was the only way to get ahead, right? And we've all seen that that wasn't necessarily true, right? And I think that it's important to recognize the difference between, and this is so important. Heather, this addresses your question too. There's a huge difference between a credit and a class, okay? So the group is saying they want four credits of math. Some students may earn a math credit by participating in shop class.
Okay.
If you think about the geometry, the calculations that go into a shop class, if they can demonstrate the mathematics component, that may be a way to earn a credit. But there are a number of students who will take a traditional algebra, geometry, algebra II. And we have to figure out what is going to be the, the minimum expectation for mathematical achievement, which I feel really strongly is algebra II. But not every student gets there. So that's a complicated conversation that we need to have later. But, but I think that splicing that out into what's the balance for that last credit is going to be a lot of the work that we have to do. But the reality is that you get good at what you do.
Yeah.
And we don't have enough time doing the things that are really important. You cannot function in our society without the ability to amortize your mortgage, calculate your payments. I mean, we have kids that really need core math skills. And I want to be clear that for me, this is not as much about test scores as it is about taking care of kids being productive, healthy citizens.
Yeah, okay.
And productive, healthy citizens have to be able to manage money. Right? And that is critical. And so there's a lot to do, but thank you. I just can't thank you enough because that balance is key, right?
And I just have, if I can just say one more thing and I'll be done. If this passes, my suggestion is you got to have your like one or two tagline thing. We're reducing credits to 24, we're going to 24 credits so that we can have more instructional, like, because you're going to lose parents, you're going to lose community members, our test scores are terrible. Nobody's going to get any farther past that. I'm sure you already know that, but.
No, it's great and we'll, we'll work on, public relations will work on crafting that message.
Okay.
Right, we can, we can do that. But I said it earlier, right? The purpose of this process is to give kids ample opportunities to have multiple different experiences and increase their time on task to be more successful in the core academic areas. We're trying to balance what everybody wants. And that's the message, Maura, how we spin that out, if that was too long, we'll chat.
It's, yeah.
It's hard, it's hard because parents only take in a little bit.
Yeah, okay. Who else?
We need a motion.
Hi. Madam Chairman, with the unanimous support of the EISA committee, I would like to move to adopt the recommendations made by the administration regarding the graduation requirements.
I'll second that.
I didn't hear the motion.
To, to adopt. The acoustics in here are so difficult.
To adopt what was recommended by administration.
So I'd like to talk about that.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, so I would prefer, as a friendly amendment, that we adopt the recommendation from the ISA committee, which was to adopt the framework with immediate focus on this rather than just what's on the screen.
Say that again? I think that's what she was saying, she said with the unanimous vote.
She said with the unanimous vote.
Okay.
I think that's.
The ISA Committee moved to adopt the framework with specific focus on the 24-credit graduation requirement and half-credit electives for immediate review and implementation by the administration. That was the motion.
Good, I could hear that.
That we adopted, so I moved that, I guess, with your friendly amendment.
I'm just saying that I would like that as the motion before the board to vote on. That's the motion that the ISA Committee recommended.
I can't really hear what you're saying.
I said that I would like that to be the motion that the board votes on was the one that was recommended.
That was the motion.
That's, that was clear, thank you.
Okay, all right. We have a second. All right, any more discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, unanimous? Great.
We do the program assurances and the policies so that.
Also thinking we should probably get Jake out of here, but we have eight minutes.
Yep, yep. Jake, would you, when we go into non-public, you may, if you would like to leave, or you can step out and come back in about an hour. So that's up to you. But we wanted to have you do your student report before you go.
Yes.
Well, if he gives the report, he wanted to come back.
Jake, would you like to do your student report now? We're kind of skipping around because we have a.
We can run a little bit late for the seven o'clock.
Okay.
We'll be okay.
We actually are pretty much done for the year in Student Council, and I just wanted to say thank you for letting me be part of the board, and I learned a lot, so.
Oh, well, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for attending virtually and in person, because that was a challenge and you were a trooper and you did it all. We appreciate that.
So on the 16th, are you going to announce your replacement?
Uh, yeah, it's Jocelyn Ampron, she's, she won the election.
Oh, she's a great candidate.
Kind of talked to her about the stuff she's going to do next year.
Great. All right, so let's move on.
We can do the program.
Yep. So Dr. Haynes, if you would like to come on up.
I keep joking with Superintendent Ambrose that this is like, I'm back, talk about program assurances.
Just one second. Is he done?
He is done.
Unless you want to stay. You're sitting there patiently, and I'm saying, I think you're done if you'd like to leave.
Yeah, you don't stay.
So program assurances, I'm back again, because the state has released the ESTER III grant
money. However, it's only two-thirds of the pot of the ESTER III grant money. The other third is coming at a date to be determined. And the program assurances, as you've already heard from me probably three or four times already this spring, are just the rules and regulations that we have to follow, which basically say that we're going to use the grant money that's being given to us from the federal government the way that it's indicated to be used and not in any other way. And the board basically has to accept that we're going to be following the rules that are laid out for us for the grant. So I'm just asking that you vote to approve the program assurances so that we can use the $665,000 of ESTER III money that's coming to us soon.
Okay. So we need a motion. Motion to approve. Second. Okay. Any discussion? Tammy, second.
Just one question.
Second.
What was the amount again, Patty?
663.
I'm going off the top of my head, but I think it's $665,000 for the, this is two-thirds of that portion.
Great.
When we get the other third, it's going to max out close to $990,000, but they're giving us the two-thirds first and then the other third is coming later.
And yes, I have a plan for that money, Mr. Baker, so.
I'm sure you do.
I'm earning already. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other discussion?
We may have a different.
All right, all in favor? All right, unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and we will jump to 7.4 so we can have Heather and Jody.
Jody is here, yep.
All right, policies, IHBC.
So the Policy Committee has presented IHBC Establishing Criteria for Special Education Evaluations.
I can't hear you.
Can you just be closer to your mic?
Sorry.
Yep.
So the Policy Committee has brought for the board's approval and review and approval is IHBC Establishing Criteria for Special Education Evaluations.
Are we looking for a first and second or just?
First is fine, we can do second at the next meeting.
All right, do we have a motion?
Move to approve both policies for first read. Policy IHBC and the policy IHBAA.
Second? I'll second.
Yep, you can second, Heather.
All right, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right. Right. You're good to go.
Yes, thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
Good job.
Got four minutes, Don. Four, woo-hoo. All right. So.
What's the page on here?
I could do my superintendent's report if you.
How about we do that?
Yep. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Mr. Malila for all of his hard work on that committee. It was a very difficult committee to run, and it was, they've done an exceptional job. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Jamie and I were on it, so it was really, really difficult.
Yeah, you've managed Jamie and Dawn, I don't, impressive. I did want to just take a few minutes and say that I have, can you hear me okay? I don't usually have a voice projection problem.
I can hear you.
That was a joke, I'm smiling under the mask. I did want to say that I think it's important to note that I have spent the better part of the last two weeks meeting with all of our seventh and eighth grade students, all of our eleventh and twelfth grade students, and all of our professional staff, teachers, K through 12, pre-K through 12. I asked them the following three questions. What do you feel is working for Sanborn? What do you feel needs to be improved for Sanborn? What ideas do you have to make it better? I got a good earful, and the interesting thing was, a lot of things are working, and the things that need to be improved are reachable. And so I'll be giving a more detailed report on this work as we develop the strategic plan. And I did explain to everyone in these meetings that I'm thinking big picture strategic plan, but we certainly get into the weeds whenever I'm meeting with people because they want to ask questions while they have me there, and it was, it was great. I learned something this year, which is that I'm going to start doing that annually. I really loved it. I really love, I mean, I meet with the teachers all the time during the year in a normal year. This year has been trickier with COVID and having to do things virtually, but I really enjoyed just sitting down with them and making it really wide open. So normally when I meet with them, I attend one of their PLC meetings and just check in and see how things are going, but I felt like I got a lot from the kids, and that is going to become annual for me. So the teachers I meet with usually three times a year, two times a year I'll go to their PLC meetings at a minimum. But I just wanted everyone to know that the feedback was clear, that the students are very interested in talking about grading and reassessment. They want to have due dates and they want a chance to fix it if they really don't get it, but they don't want it to be perceived by students that things are really loose because they feel like it's not serving them in preparation for college. The students were unanimous in that. Lot of good conversations. I did want to share that the seventh and eighth grade students and staff feel very comfortable at this building. The seventh and eighth grade staff feel like their school has lost a little bit of their individual identity. So we talked about some strategies to fix that, which may include painting their hallway and their part of the building their own colors and giving it a kind of more of like a middle school vibe, which certainly during COVID was tricky to do. I did want to say that I know I've received a number of emails and I prepared this long statement to read, but I'm not going to read it, I'm just going to say this. We, I've gotten a lot of emails about masking and what are we doing with masking and when is masking going to back off? And I just want everyone to know that I hear everyone loud and clear, and we will be discussing our masking policy for the fall. I sincerely believe and hope that the CDC will move toward mask optional for everyone, but right now, the CDC is recommending that people who are not vaccinated wear masks, which means that all of our K6 students need to wear masks. That's their recommendation for now. Seven through 12, very few kids have done the full vaccination cycle of two shots. It's impossible time-wise from when they changed it to 12 years old to now, we're just not there yet. I know that everyone's excited, and trust me, I've talked to our insurance company, I've talked to the folks at the state. Dr. Haynes and I meet regularly, sometimes twice a day to discuss issues with masking. There is no one in the world who would like to see us be done with masking than me. But our insurance company has made it very clear that the best way to protect ourselves from risk is to follow the recommendations of the CDC. And that's, that's it. So that's what we're doing. And we did just have two cases at the middle school this week. If people think this is over, I just want to remind you all, it is not over. We are still having active cases in the schools, not transferred in the schools, but students who get it. And the measures that we're taking, we have not had a single transference of COVID in our schools all year. Just give me 10 more days and then we'll be through this, and hopefully in the fall, we'll be all set. I did want to say that we have, COVID has brought a couple of unique challenges with regard to enrollments in our schools. Some people have said to me, oh, should we have reorganized? Our enrollments are going up with COVID, more people are moving to Newton in particular. I just want to address that. I've done an analysis of the numbers, and the reality is that we are basically staying level instead of going down, which means that compared to six years ago or seven years ago, we're still 50 students per class lower than we were then. So it's important to recognize that at one time, our kindergarten classes would have 140 students. Now we have, this year, instead of 75 or 80, we have 95. It's not a huge bubble of kids. It's, there are years where you'll have 105 and years where you'll have 75, like the current first graders. So it's just important to recognize that swells and ups and downs and numbers are common. I'm working with Mr. Angel because our K projections did come in higher as a result of students moving in during COVID, and we will need a teacher at the Bakey School for kindergarten or first grade, depending on who ends up where. So we're working on that, and I'm not going to use contingency funds for that unless I absolutely have to, right? I'd prefer to work the budget and try to do it through attrition and figure it out. So I'm working on it. You'll notice that in the upcoming conversations, we will be talking about the Bakey Boiler this evening. I just wanted to make sure the board knows that with the grant money that we've received and with our year-end funds, which are anticipated to be roughly 2.1 million, although those numbers never firm up until the last minute, so Mr. Angel asked me not to have any votes about this tonight. We do need to have a conversation at our next board meeting, so this would be next board meeting agenda, about the Memorial Parking Lot, because it needs to be repaved, which is a cost of roughly $75,000. The Chase Field needs to be fixed, it cannot be used right now for baseball, and leveling that out, I don't have an amount for yet. And I really need more books for the kids. We have a lot of issues with remediation, and I know that I said in my budget presentation, which we have received some emails from parents that would like to see us fund more books, I would like to see us have a conversation about two mechanisms for books. One being the grant money. I've asked Patty to research what we can and can't spend the grant money on, and the other part being doing a large book order with some of the year-end funds. I need, I really need, and I mean need, I need about $160,000 for books. One classroom library of leveled reading books costs between $4,000 and $6,000. We have 35 teachers. It's 140 grand, and I have put this off for three years, but if we have year-end funds and grant money, we could fund partially from one and partially from the other and really help our teachers with those remediation efforts in grades K through 8. And that's just an estimate. So I want to be clear, that's only the classroom teachers. I did authorize and ask Dr. Haynes to order $8,000 or $10,000 worth of books for the Memorial School immediately, because when I met with the Memorial School Special Education teachers, they told me that all of their lower-level reading books, second and third grade, went to Bakey. Well, if you're a fourth grade student and you're behind in reading, what grade level books do you need, second and third grade? So we just, we had to order those, and Dr. Haynes, I know, is all over that and will take care of it. I do want you to know that I researched at the board's request our current grant money, and I am still working on clarifying some of the numbers with Mr. Angel, who I could not reach today, so I will do a bigger report out. And yes, Jamie and I have been talking regularly about those numbers as well. So I just wanted to thank everyone. I know this is really hard and we all want to be done with the pandemic. I want it as bad as you do for my own children. I have a 13 and a 16-year-old. I need, I need everyone to just give us 10 more days, and then we're going to have the conversation about what things look like in the fall. I do encourage people, if you feel strongly about masking requirements, to reach out to the New Hampshire DOE, the Governor's Office, and the CDC. We do not control the CDC's recommendations. We do not control the Department of Health and Human Services recommendations. Those are the recommendations that we have to follow. So please reach out to those folks and your local representatives at the Senate, the House, anyone that is at the state-level legislature, we need you to let them know how you feel. And I do appreciate the fact that people have generally been very kind and reasonable in their emails, even though they're incredibly frustrated. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Somebody want to read us into non-public as we have to go?
Oh, I think Pete does that.
Mr. Broderick, you want to read us into non-public?
Oh, my goodness. Why does this always fall on me?
I thought you took on that response.
Madam Chairman, make a motion for a non-public session on the RSA 91-83, numeral 2, B and J.
Second. All right, roll call, vote. Jamie?
Aye.
Pete?
Yes.
Heather?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
Myself?
Aye.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
I'm here for physical health and education at Bakey Memorial School. I have Daniel Burdis, physical and health education at Memorial School, Emily Dresser, STEAM teacher at Memorial School, Crystal Leicos as literacy interventionist, and Katrina Pius. I apologize, Katrina, if I did not say that properly. Grade five at Memorial. At the high school, we have Kelly Cleghorn for English and Stephen McDonough for Industrial Technology.
Move to accept.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, yeah, so I second it. All in favor? All right, unanimous? I think Tammy made the motion and Maura seconded.
I can't find my resignations, hang on a second.
I have mine here if you want to.
I got one. One of them is very sad. Yeah, I know.
You ready for resignations?
Yep.
All right, we have two resignations. One is Amanda Smith from the Bakey School Speech and Language Pathologist, and Kevin McKenney, the Physical Education Teacher at Memorial School.
Move to accept.
Second. Any discussion? Very sad.
With regret.
With regret. With regret. All in favor? All right, unanimous?
So what would ever happen if a resignation got voted down and had to stay forever? Is that how it works?
I have no idea. I wonder if we even need to vote on that, to be honest, but I just do it.
We always have.
Yeah.
All right, committee reports. I will start with policy.
Was the superintendent reporting?
We did the superintendent's report earlier.
Okay.
It was long.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure.
I was gonna, I'm just stop. Policy, do you have an update?
Hi, yes. So the Policy Committee met today, and we reviewed two policies that will be moved to the board for our next meeting, JIC and JICD, and that is our last meeting before the summer break. Um, and that is our last meeting before the summer break.
Okay, EISA. The Excellence and Student Achievement Committee met, uh, I don't have my, we met on, in May 19th and I didn't report on that and Mr. Malilla pretty much stole my thunder. Presentation was really my report. So our next meeting is two weeks from today. What is June? Hold on, June 16th, yes. At 4:30.
Great. Finance.
Yeah, Finance Committee was not able to meet. Mr. Angel was not available. I'll be working with Superintendent Ambrose to try to find a time when he might be available. So we'll just schedule it as soon as we can. Uh, the focus areas would be where do we stand for unencumbered funds? Mr. Ambrose mentioned that earlier tonight. Uh, so that's one of the areas that we want to focus on. And the COVID comparison spending, what have we spent? What were the grants? What new grants are coming in, et cetera? Would be the two focus areas as well as just the spending things that Superintendent Ambrose laid out earlier.
Thank you. Uh, facilities.
Uh, facilities met this afternoon and we reviewed updated proposals on replacing the two boilers at the Bakey School. Um, we're gonna, there, there were, there were three proposals. As you know, the, the boilers themselves are built in sections and in the past repairs have been able to be made by replacing sections. But in this case, the corrosion and the condition is so extensive that we base, after reviewing it extensively, we've come to the conclusion, and I think the board was part of that, um, that we needed to actually replace those boilers rather than repair them. And you're going to hear more about that tonight, but we got three bids. Uh, the bids range from 283,000 to 449,845 dollars. And it depends on what components in those bids we actually actually go for, because there are, there are, there are some areas that, um, we need more information about. But again, you'll hear more about that later.
Great, thank you. Uh, Public Relations.
I, we have not met since our last report.
Okay. Um, Personnel, um, we have not met since I last reported and our next meeting is June 16th. Um, SST.
Uh, we met, but I don't think that there was anything specific to report in addition to the last meeting. Which is all about enrollments and the cost per.
Tom, can you, can you, can you guys move your mics up?
I was just reporting that, as I shared at the last meeting, cost per pupil and enrollments at SST continue to be areas of growth. And the SST is also working on their program options and, um, some potential new programmings, but there's nothing further to report.
Thank you.
Um, the Budget Committee has not met.
And Wellness?
Wellness has not met.
All right, um, first public comment. Here. So. School Board Goals.
Great. Um, so as you know, we, we set our goals annually. And, uh, some of the, the topics that we've discussed are, um, really important. And, uh, some of the things that we've been working on include, uh, the strategic plan and the implementation of the math program. I am working very hard with administration and soon more with staff regarding response to intervention, which is the idea that students receive support in the classroom academically or behaviorally, and then some pullout support. And then you make special education referrals, so that all is tied to the special education referral process. Um, I did share with the board a little memo of some ideas for things that would be supportive for goals, which was the grading, specifically looking at how we're grading and what we should do in the future, response to intervention in math. Uh, Mr. Baker suggested in an email to me, uh, that I wanted to share the idea publicly was that really a lot of these things fall under the strategic plan. So, uh, any of these things would be really good school board goals. I do think that from my office, getting the strategic plan done is really important because it drives, um, uh, the budgeting process and the decisions that we make on academics. So I do think that grading and response to intervention and math all fall under the strategic plan. And I turn it back over to you, to the Chair, for more discussion.
Jim?
Um, we had three goals last year. One was the Math and Reading Program. We wanted to begin implementation in the fall of 2021. And we also wanted to choose a new grade reporting system, again, to be implemented fall of 2021. Obviously, COVID has thrown those off. But as Tom said, those really fall under the strategic plan. But I, I think that, that because the new grade reporting system was actually a specific goal, we should continue that goal because it, it hasn't been completed, it's in the works. But it's very important. And then the, the five-year strategic plan.
So when you say that, Jim, did you mean, so Alma did get implemented, which is the new grading software?
Yeah.
So we completed that goal, but we're still working on it. I mean, it takes a couple of years to implement grading software. When I say grading, I'm thinking more, the, the Alma implementation monitoring is one component. But I think that we need to have a conversation about our grading practices and specifically reassessment. And as Mr. Fitzpatrick said earlier, that conversation about how do parents understand what their grades mean?
Right, part of our goal was the new report card.
Yeah, and that is happening.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's, but the, the grading that's reported in that report card, the way that we convey it, is it a four or is it an A? Is it a three or is it a B, right? That, that conversation I think we need to have as a district because the feedback that I've received from staff, students and parents is that they don't understand what it means. And we need to work on that. And I do think that we need to discuss some changes. So I'm only asking to clarify, Mr. Baker, I agree with everything you said.
Jamie?
So I don't know if you, you want a motion to discuss it or if we just want to discuss it, but, uh, I truly believe, so we're bringing in a new math program. If we want to know what the hell's going on, excuse me. If we want to know what's going on, we really need to, to have metrics that can tell us that. And the current system isn't providing that, in my opinion. So I, I guess I'll make a motion, we can discuss it and decide whether we want to do it or not. So I, I'd like to make a motion that, that we move as a goal for next year to move to a numeric grading system that translates into a letter grade. And with our new Alma system, we can show both. This is the number, this is a translated grade, so that everybody knows where we are and we can start tracking against the new programs that were coming in from a baseline that is understandable.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Oh no, I just wanted to second it. I was very anxious for that.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
She wanted to. No, I was just very anxious.
Okay, no, I, I was just, I was just confused because you talked about a numeric grade that can translate into a, a letter grade. The way I remember report cards, you got an 86, so you got an A or a B. So there'd be somewhere on the report card that says, you just got an 85, which equates to a B plus or.
So yeah, and, and in my mind, we just put in a new Alma system and the new Alma system lets us do all kinds of things and incorporate it, so.
In a sense, you'd get both.
Yeah, so you, you'd have, it's a seven, you know, whatever the numbers are. They got an 82 and a B. 82 is an American, it's a B.
Right.
Everybody can see what it is.
That's what they used to do at the bottom.
Right.
It was like, the B is 80 to 84 or something.
Yeah, they, they had like a.
Then at the bottom.
And when you, when you talk to the, when you talk to the students, or at least the students I've talked to, and I heard that earlier tonight from Tom's comments and other people's comments, they have no idea.
No.
And, and I, I talk to kids on the street and they, they talk about, yeah, I'm getting all As. What are you getting? Oh, Ps and IPs, but it's the same as an A. And you know, well, if, if, is there anything else you can get? Well, you can get an E. Well, is that higher or lower than the P? Well, it's higher. So they're just, if we want to reengage.
Yes.
Parents, and, and if we really want to know where we stand, what we have isn't serving the need.
Kids are kids. I got a P. Okay. What's a P? I, I made it? You know, it's like, what do you mean you made it? You made it high, you made it low, you, you know? Did you get a P meaning you got a 95 or did you get a P because you got an 80? Well, I'm proficient. What, an 80 proficient or a 95 proficient, you know? So I, I, I gotta tell you, I definitely support that. And I'll tell you, parents, that's probably one of the biggest complaints I had from parents when I first came on this board. So I'm, I'm with you on that.
Yeah, and I, I completely agree, wholeheartedly. I think we need to, like you said, perfect. We need to reengage everyone. It's not just the parents, it's the students as well. My senior that's graduating this year, she said the worst thing for her was not really understanding what her grade meant. And not really understanding the difference between, well, what is the difference between a 2.5 and a 3.0? And why do I push to get that little bit extra? Because it's only a half a point. You know, that they need that, they need that engagement. So I, I agree.
You want to say anything?
So that's a motion.
I think.
Yeah, so are we going down the road? Um, so Jamie's motion is to move, I got to move, move to numeric grading system and then there was some other stuff after that with.
So yeah, so I'll, I'll repeat the motion, to move to a numeric grading system with a translation into a letter grade with both appearing in Alma on the report.
Nice seconded.
Okay, great. So it sounds like we're there.
Any further discussion?
Well, I, I was just clarifying.
Yeah.
Oh.
I mean, I'm, I have no objection to that. I'm just trying to decide. I mean, that's a pretty hard and fast goal. Is there any analysis that needs to get done? What's the, is there a process? Can we move that to our Excellence and Student Achievement Committee? Would that be appropriate to just, you know, sort of work on that there and?
Yes.
I mean, it's, okay. I assume there's some, there's a process that needs to be established. I guess that would be my, my addition maybe would be to, you know, study and establish a process to move to the numeric grading system, but that might just be semantics.
I think it might also have to go in front of policy as well to make sure that the policy.
It would certainly, it would, yeah, because I'm sure that, I'm sure that's written in our policy.
Thanks. So, so when, when you set a goal, that sets me to work on all the different facets of what you just described. So there'll be a policy component, component to that goal. There'll be a public relations component to that goal. There'll be an ISA component to that goal. It really is, connects like, you know, four different subcommittees for different reasons. And the policies are a big chunk of work.
So to clarify, we're setting this as a goal, not as something that we're implementing?
Right, it's a goal for this school year to figure it out.
To work towards. Okay, okay.
Um, I have a feeling that there are some administrators and based on the student and teacher feedback, they're going to want to go with this pretty quickly. So I don't think that this is going to be.
Is that a friendly amendment to start next fall?
No.
I, I'm all over it. I'll, I'll jump right on that.
I second Jamie's motion.
I, I have to say that. All right, I'm just not going to say that. All right, I'm good.
Let's move on.
So to, so setting. I'm a. A goal to move forward.
Yes, so setting, we're setting. I think we're just, we're just giving comment now.
Okay, I thought we were voting. I thought you were all. I will. I have no comment. Further comment? No, I'm just ready to vote. Okay.
We all getting tired here?
All right, all in favor? All right, unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, that is one goal down.
So I propose that another goal is to create a core five-year strategic plan.
Yes, to finish it.
I second that goal.
All right, any discussion?
It needs to get done. I mean, we would have had it done. I think COVID knocked the socks off everything. We need to get it done.
And behind the scenes, I'm working super hard on it. I have it all framed up, so it's going to go pretty, I, I've done a lot of work this last two months. And so has Matt with the CIP.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous.
I have a question just about the goal. So they look very broad. Are we able to break them down and make them have more objection? Object, objectives and interventions of what we're going to do to meet those goals? So the community kind of knows what the process, because as a community member, just looking at those three goals, it's, it's really broad and I feel like if we broke it down more, uh, community members would feel more informed.
I, I'll work on a, a statement of what those each goal is as a breakdown. Yeah.
I mean, we have a goal and then the objectives to.
Something about math.
Yeah, so we had, we had.
And then it'll be, it'll go out to the people.
Things that you brought up, um, RTI and math.
I, I think that sincerely, if we're going to tackle the grading in the strategic plan, the RTI and the math program are going to fall within that. So for example, if you want to make another third goal about analyzing and implementing changes or redoing the same process for seven through 12 that we did for K6 with math, the ball's rolling on that and we can make that a goal, but it all falls into the strategic plan bucket. So it's, if you want to, it, to me, that one doesn't matter if it's explicit, but it, it's happening anyway. But I do think if you make it a goal to, to research and implement a seven through 12 math program, I, I think you should do that.
I, I'd agree with that.
So too. Yeah, I would like to do that.
Yeah.
I make that motion.
A date to have.
I can only count to 20.
With a goal of implementing for the fall of 2020.
And I'm confused.
Right, Heather, there's that explicit part, but that one, that one needs to have a deadline, right? The strategic plan needs to be completed no later than the end of next year, but honestly, I, I'm, I'm rolling with the strategic plan. Like I'm hoping to really, unless something.
We want our goals to be smart goals, Tom.
Yeah, yes. And, and the thing is, is that I've been working on that so much that there's just, I need, just need to roll the momentum forward. So with the math, it'll be the same. So fall of 2022.
Not yet.
So I'll make a motion that we implement a new math curriculum for grade seven through 12 by fall of 2022.
I'll second that motion.
Second that, Maura?
Yeah, Maura did. I think it was to, uh, research and implement a.
Um, new math curriculum for seven through 12 by fall of 2022.
Woo, woo. All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Jamie's a happy little.
Fabulous.
Happy guy tonight.
Yeah.
Right. Is everybody comfortable where we're at with our, with our goals?
Yeah.
Other discussion of anything else? Okay. All right, uh, let's see.
8.1.
Yeah, SRSD, enrollment option for children.
Just, this isn't, this is, uh, should be pretty simple, I hope, in the sense that this year you allowed staff members during the pandemic to enroll their children in Sanborn at no cost, so that they could be on the same work schedule as their kids attending school. I'm not advocating one way or the other. I just need to know, are, are we considering that again for next year? Or are we going to revert to our standard policy? Yes.
Did anybody avail themselves?
Very few.
But?
Very few.
Very few. But some did.
Yes. I don't have an exact number, I'm sorry.
Okay, so why don't we continue with them?
Yep.
Yeah, Heather.
It used to be a cost of three grand.
I was going to say, you know, based on the unknown information that we have about what certain districts are doing in the fall, I would recommend continuing it if a few, if only a few family teachers avail to it.
And, and if they know about it now, they may make different plans. We made that decision pretty late in the game last year. Jamie?
I, I just, I don't oppose it. The only concern that it have is we, we do need to be cognizant of if, if it becomes an automatic renewal every single year, then you can change equations and, and cause yourself some issues. I think we are still in a pandemic. We're not still where they are. I can, I could support that this year, but I'd be very leery next year.
Yeah, the typical rate is 50% of the tuition is what it would normally be. So I think if we tell people that we're doing it for one more year, but not to plan on it the year after, they could make an informed decision.
Yeah, and that's why, I just want to get that out there. I, I don't think this is just an annual, hey, we do this, we've changed the policy. We're still, we're still responding to pandemic.
Thank you.
Don, Madam Chairman, sorry. Um, I just want to throw this out there, so you can either discuss it or not discuss it. But should we put, I, I believe in covering your own butt, right? Should we put a number on that up to 10 students or something? I mean, only because we don't know what the future is going to bring. This pandemic could have gotten worse and all of a sudden, we're saying, teachers be here. Okay, I'll be here, but we want to bring our 50, 60 kids with us.
Well, it's, it's funny.
I don't know. I just want to throw that out there.
I had that thought as well.
It's never been a problem, but I just want to throw it out there. What do you think?
Yeah, I was going to ask the same question is, you know, do we need to put a cap, if you will, so that if we hit a certain number, we need to. we need to come back to the board and say, okay, this is the impact it's having at i- if we have impacts at certain grade levels where we need other teaching positions or or whatnot.
I I think that what you do is you say, here's an idea is that you could say as a board that um, someone could make the motion to allow staff members to bring their children to Sandborne, provided that it doesn't require us to increase our teaching staff. And then that way.
I didn't hear that. I was thinking up to ten by lottery.
Right, but the problem is that if you have ten all-in-one grade level and it causes us to have to have to hire a teacher, that won't work. What I would say is is provided that we don't have to add any additional teaching staff.
I just want to throw it out. If you feel you got a good way of doing it, fine.
I I can I can I make a motion for that? That we allow this for one more year, provided that that we don't have to hire any more teaching staff.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, unanimous. Uh, Baky Boiler update.
Yes, uh, the facilities committee met this evening and uh, voted unanimously to move forward with um, asking the board for a motion to allow the superintendent and the facilities committee chair to move forward with replacing the two boilers at Baky and the um, uh, Jamie, tell me the name of the tank again. Is it the overflow tank, the?
The.
Expansion.
The expand.
Expansion tank, yeah.
The expansion tank and that that should be roughly a cost of two hundred and twenty or less, two hundred and twenty thousand or less. We are going to continue to work on the 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 water pumps and bring that back to the board in two weeks. But because of the time of everything, we want to move forward. We are waiting for a little more information from one of the people who bid because they didn't break their bid down into sections. So we couldn't get an answer on the um on the breakdown of what the boilers were versus the pumps. So we we wanted to give them until tomorrow morning. But we wanted authorization from the board to move forward as soon as we have that information. Oh, Jamie, Jamie had a question. Or Pete, yeah.
Yeah, um, I'm not sure on what you're asking. Are you saying that the committee and you would have authorization to approve a contract?
Thank you. It would be the board would authorize the superintendent and the chair of the facilities committee to wrap this up tomorrow and choose one of the two bidders. We we've got it down to two companies. We're just waiting for a little more information from one.
Okay, I'll tell you what my concern is. I I'm not sure if we can do that because we're the fiduciary. We we had the fiduciary responsibility is ours. I'm not saying we're we're not we're abdicating it, but I'm just not sure if we can authorize two people to approve the allocate or the spending, actually, it's not just allocation, the spending of the money. I just don't know. We're the fiduciary responsibility. I think, I'm just going to say what I think, that may be our responsibility to do that.
Well, again, you're authorizing us up to a certain amount and then we're going to follow up with that bid. Yeah. Thanks, Pete.
Down the road, somebody to say you abdicated your responsibility, you shouldn't, you can't do it, you know?
I'll double check with our attorney in the morning just to be sure to to ally that concern. I'm not worried about it because your fiduciary responsibility is primarily to set the the present the budget to the public.
I think covering that way, we probably are. I wasn't quite sure what you were asking when I said what I just said, but better to cover ourselves than not.
Yeah, thank you. We're just asking for the board to vote so that we can move forward and not hold this up for two more weeks.
Yeah, so we're authorizing up to a certain amount, which is our fiduciary responsibility, in my opinion.
Yep.
And what is that? Oh, Jamie.
So just a I I want to help clarify. So we're we're looking at three bids. Well, one bid's three hundred thousand, one bid's three hundred and ten thousand, one bid's four hundred and forty-nine thousand. There is a consensus complete that we need new boilers. Clearly, we've all seen the picture. So we said, yes, we need new boilers. We need a new expansion tank. The one of the quotes has that number somewhere in the neighborhood of just the boilers of a hundred and sixty or so. Uh, another one has a a number on an expansion tank somewhere in the fifteen or so. So we're not sure because of the breakouts of the different quotes, meaning the two lower quotes, what that delta is. So we're looking for, uh, so we don't have to wait on a lost time. We were saying to both of those lower quotes, can you install by September as part of the quote? They're saying yes. One of them says they can get the castings within two to three weeks. So we just are trying to speed the time of it. And I think the actual motion was uh, because we didn't know the numbers, two hundred thousand plus or minus ten. So that's where Tom gets the two twenty from. The question that's on the table is we have one pump out of eight failed in a redundant system. So you don't really need to replace that right now before getting the further information on the pumps. And the further informations on the pumps are, do you really replace six pumps when only one is gone because you're going to upgrade to a a servo variable motor? And if you are, what is the return on investment calculation? That's somewhere in the neighborhood, depending on the quotes and how they break out between a uh, somewhere in the neighborhood, maybe of of ninety to a hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's you're paying out of your pocket in order to get the savings that come with those pumps. We want to see the savings that we're paying that kind of money for before we go to that route. So we're looking to get some information back from the vendors on those points before we commit to pumps. But we all know that we need the boiler and we need the expansion tank. So we want to get that going so those those orders can be placed.
Can I also, I just want to add one other thing. How much money are you talking, Tom?
Uh, I think it was roughly two twenty for tonight and then the pumps would be later.
I I'm going to suggest, and I can make an emotion if you want, we go like two fifty.
Not going to need that much.
I agree. That's why I'm going two fifty. But we all know from experience that they come in at two ten and all of a sudden you stop putting pressure behind something and all of a sudden, oh, by the way, when we fired it up, such and such just went, or this happened, or we didn't realize, and there are add-ons to all contracts.
Sure, the the thing I tell.
How much you want to put in, I don't care. So I'd say.
But that would come that would come back, right? So i- if they if they had an overrun to a contract that they bid on a delivery installed, they'd have to talk us into no honest to God, you you really need to work with us on that. That would have to come back to the board.
Okay, if you want to do it that way, fine.
I would, because I want that control.
If we're going to trust you with two twenty, we could just as easily trust you with two forty. So because we're up against the wall. That's the problem.
Right, right. I agree, Pete.
So so I want to give you a little more. Not that you'll say, oh, great, we got two fifty, let's spend it. No. But what I am saying is, in my experience, all of a sudden, we go out with a contract and things happen. And I don't want to short you.
Right, but the the PO, the PO that would be issued.
That's fine. Two twenty is is already a little more.
Okay, well, see, I didn't. I wasn't at the meeting today, as you know.
Right.
You know, um, no, that's fine. I just wanted to cover ourselves.
Yeah.
Again, number one, right?
And I I just so that everybody understands. So this expenditure, this PO that will be issued will reduce unexpended funds. But a boiler is needed. We cannot go into next year without a boiler. So that has to happen.
Also, we're renting a unit now and we don't want to continue to have to pay that next year. So there's a they could, the the contractors that bid can complete the work if we give them the word soon by uh, the September fifteenth opening.
We figure that September fifteenth is roughly when we'll need heat.
Right.
So I'll I'll go ahead and make the same motion that I made in the facilities committee, that we authorize the superintendent and the chair of the facilities committee to execute uh, against a total not to exceed two hundred thousand plus or minus ten percent. Well, plus ten percent, I guess.
It was two twenty.
But that's where you get the two twenty from, the two hundred thousand plus to ten percent. Um, to to get a PO issued to get this delivery insured before uh, the September school year starts.
Friendly amendment?
Second, you probably need a second for.
Yeah, second it down.
If we don't, if we can get it for less than two ten, we don't want to be.
That's why I I changed it from not plus or minus, but just top top of two twenty, up to two twenty. Agreed.
Right.
So I'll 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 remote I'll re-motion to just the max of two twenty if I can get a resecond.
Comes in at one eighty, we have to spend.
I'll re- resecond. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, unanimous. All right, athletics update.
All right, um.
Last one.
Glasses. Um, tournaments are underway in all sports with our teams finding mixed success to date. The high school tennis teams both bowed out of the NHIA tournament last week to strong teams from Wyndham and Goffstown. The boys' baseball team held Pembroke to four runs but was stymied on offense and lost the opening round game. Uh, this afternoon, the girls' softball team played Oyster River. The middle school baseball and softball teams both opened their tournaments yesterday and won their games convincingly. Both teams will return to action Thursday. Middle school track wrapped up its season with a meet here at Sandborne last week. Our high school track team had some wonderful individual and team performances this past weekend at the girls' division two meet. For the girls, Kalen La Chapelle finished fourth in the long jump, third in the high jump, and fifth in the triple jump. She will compete this weekend in the NHIAA meet of champions here at Sandborne Saturday afternoon as a result. Uh, also scoring for Sandborne were Mariana Di Amo- Di Amolo.
D'Amelio, I think.
Thank you, D'Amelio. In the shot put and Gillian Evans in the discus. I wanted to say discuss, but I did not. Gillian also qualified for the meet of champions. On the boy side, senior Max Lussier was a one-man meet of champions himself, winning an amazing three events at the division two meet pole vault, javelin and high jump. His thirty-point performance pushed the team to a third place finish. Senior Nick Lucas finished fifth in the shot put and a mere nine inches behind Max in the javelin for a second place in the state. Um, also scoring for Sandborne were Trevin Leek in the high hurdles, Brady Ash in the three hundred hurdles and Tyler St. Jean in the triple jump. Good luck to all the athletes competing this weekend in the MOCs. COVID, we've had no impacts on athletics in the past two weeks due to COVID-related issues. Yes. I would like to uh, thank our athletic families for their kind cooperation, such a difficult and um, one-time changes this spring. And I'd just like to thank Mr. Dawson for all of his hard work. That'll be his last report this year.
Great job, Sandborne athletes.
Yay.
And just a little side note there, Kalen. She is going to UNH and she is going to continue her track career.
Awesome. Great, great job. That's wonderful.
She's pretty amazing. Um, okay, second public comment. There's no one here. Um, if anyone has anything they would like to put on the next meeting agenda, please hit Tom and I.
Well, I should come up with a bunch of.
Yeah, sometime next week would be great. We do have on the on a list contingency funds.
I'll be on Kate.
Um, any budget adjustments, superintendent's authorization to hire, negotiation committee members and the high school math program because we are doing a pilot for some work on. So we'll we'll be in touch about the pilot. I'll have Patty come. We will have interviews for the Baky principal next week. In two weeks.
Fifteen things to put on the agenda.
Well, then you just email them. You just email them right to us and I'll see if we want to put them on. How's that?
Of course, the chair may not put them on.
We need a a a motion for a a short non-public.
For a second now, the next annual regional school board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, last day of school at six PM in the library at Sandborne Regional High School. Now, Mr. B, would you like to bring us into non-public?
Sure, now they come to you.
Now, she, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I make a motion to go into non-public, going R S A ninety-one dash A colon three, you know, fog up my glasses here, colon three, two. But I don't know what is under B or J or.
Say both.
Okay, say both. I mean, both, no. B and J.
All right, roll call vote. Uh, Jamie.
Aye.
Pete.
Aye.
Heather.
Hi.
Yes.
Hi, myself.
Yes.
Aye. Okay, all right. We are now going into non-public.